And we have to start over. Okay, so we are recording. Everyone's voice will be recorded and picture. And believe it or not, the D B A hearings actually make it to YouTube. I don't know how that happens. So at any rate, good evening, everyone. My name is Jocelyn Campbell. I'm the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the Town of Nahant. And I'd like to first take care of a little bit of business amongst the members. If you just don't mind us talking about this for a minute. So all of the members, tell me if they have read and approved the minutes from the prior meeting that were circulated. And the last meeting was on May seventeenth.
I have read, I have read the ones that I was involved in. Yeah. One of them I was not.
All right, Caitlin?
Same.
Then, okay. Peter?
Yes.
Okay, and Michael?
Yep.
Does anyone want to bring a motion to approve those minutes?
Uh, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from our prior meeting.
Uh, David Walsh, second.
Any question on the motion?
Uh, Peter Barber, votes aye.
David Walsh, aye.
Look at Peter Barber, David Walsh.
Caitlin Kelly, aye.
Mike Raworth, aye.
Jocelyn Campbell, aye. Okay, wonderful. Okay, again, today is June twenty seventh, uh, June seventh, I mean, two thousand and twenty one. We're going to start with the petition for fifty eight Lennox Road. And I'm calling that meeting to order right now. I want to introduce the board members. You may have heard our names already from the discussion of the approval of the prior minutes. But we have myself, Jocelyn Campbell. We have my co-chair, David Walsh. We have Peter Barber with us and Caitlin Kelly and Michael Raworth. And whereas Caitlin Kelly and Michael Raworth are technically alternate members, they're going to be sitting tonight. I'm going to appoint them as full board members for the evening so we can have them, their assistance with these hearings tonight. The way the hearing process works is that the petitioner will say their petition, tell us what they want from the board. And then, um, what we'll do is we'll read the hearing notice into the, instead of want to read that next, the hearing notice from the newspaper. Uh, once you present your case, we'll have questions from the board. We'll find out if anyone's here to speak either in favor or against your petition. And then we will deliberate, which means we will talk and you will not talk, and we'll talk amongst ourselves, then we'll have some motions and make a decision. So that's a pretty succinct way for us to do it. Normally, we pick somebody else besides me to read this, but because of the Zoom, it's easier for me to just read it. I'm going to read the hearing notice for tonight. It said that at five P M. it would be a public hearing on the petition filed by Margaret Ackerman, owner of the property located at fifty X, fifty eight Lennox Road in the heart of Massachusetts, seeking a special permit or variance to extend their current deck by four feet, by twelve feet on the left side. The inspector of buildings has denied a building permit on March twenty second, two thousand and twenty one, where the proposed deck is in violation of section five oh three of the zoning bylaws of the town of Nahant, where the proposed lot coverage is thirty-three percent, where the maximum allowed is twenty-five percent. Where the proposed left side setback is an extension of same, where the minimum allowed is ten feet. Now, this hearing tonight is being operated via Zoom technology. And this is because of Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law under general laws, chapter thirty A, section eighteen. Of course, this is going to end all pretty soon, so we're fortunate to still be able to do this via Zoom. All right, so now that I've done that, um, Miss Ackerman, you could present your case.
Okay, thank you so much, and thanks, everyone, for being here tonight. So, uh, my request is simple. I have a deck on the back of my house. And because of the zoning laws, I'm only allowed to extend it, uh, ten feet from the property line of my next door neighbor. However, the footprint of my house is six feet from the property line. And I wanted the deck to line up with the footprint. Um, if it's okay, I can share a photo of that. I think a picture tells a thousand words, and it might make it easier. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Up, you have to, um, you have to let me share the screen.
Okay, one second. Right now.
Okay. Still can't. Maybe if you make me the co-host for a minute? I promise.
So try that.
Okay, here we go. Great.
I think you have to click share screen, too. I'm not seeing any pictures.
Okay, hold on, I'm, uh, here we go. All right, here we go. You're seeing my files?
She in Zoom.
Okay.
What's on the bottom, maybe? Those are the pictures?
Yeah, those are pictures down the bottom.
Okay. Oh, that's right, you're right. Thank you.
Try and get your cursor down there. This will go.
No, I guess, okay, hold on. Oh, I see what I have to do. I'm sorry. Bear with me for a moment, please.
Yeah, we all have to deal with this technology, so it's, we've learned to become patient.
Yeah, I know. At least we don't have to sit in a hot town hall.
Oh, exactly.
And so now you see my screen, my Gmail screen.
Yep.
So I, I emailed them to myself, so I'll just open the email. Be easier, save time. They're trying to figure out my file. Thank you. Appreciate your patience. Okay, here we go. Okay, so this is the current deck. Everybody can see that?
Yep.
Okay, and you can see that, um, that is the fourth feet to the end of the window there, that, that beautiful picture window. And I have this, um, ending right in the middle of my, uh, window. So I just wanted to extend it to the end so that it would be lined up with the rest of the house and also not obstructing the window. And that's, that's all I want to do.
Okay. All right.
So should I?
What I was going to do though, is I want to go back and go back to one participant. We'll come back to the full screen of all the.
Should I stop share? Everyone have a good, okay. I think I attached a photo to the packet as well.
Yep, yep.
Okay. So are you, was that the, did you have anything else you want to say, Miss Ackerman? Are you all set?
Fine, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay. Do any of the board members have any questions for the petitioner?
Yeah, good question. How high is this deck from the ground?
Oh, okay. Let's see, I have to look at the documents. Um, it's about, uh, six feet off the ground.
Okay.
The house is local, the back of the house is located on a hill. So it's, you know, the basement goes out and the back door requires a full staircase to get to the yard. So that's the, the height of it, which is about six by six feet, six inches, looks like.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, I have a question. How, how long have you owned the house?
Three years. Three years tomorrow.
All right. Um, so you wouldn't know if there were any restrictions put on this deck when it was originally installed?
I actually installed the deck, and there were no restrictions, except that I had to make it this size. The restriction was just the, you know, the, uh.
Yep. The setbacks. Yep. I understand.
The question went to height as well, just because on the sheet that was submitted with the dimensional requirements, it, I noticed you're not asking for an action as far as height, but it does say eight feet plus or minus, and the existing being twenty feet. So I didn't know if that was just like a typo, or there is no change to the height, right?
No, there's no change to the height. The height is not twenty feet.
That's the house.
Yeah, that's the house. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, okay, got it. Thank you.
All right. Um, and do you have any other portraits back there, uh, Miss Ackerman? You have another deck?
No.
Deck in the back? Okay. All right, so is there any more questions for the petitioner? Okay, so we're going to go to our deliberations.
Wait a minute, do we, do we want to hear from any, anyone with input?
Michael, yes, one second. I forgot, I do brought that up. Um, is there any persons present who would like to speak in favor of the application? That is the applicant, of course.
I'm here as Peg's neighbor, and I am in favor of it.
Oh, you are? Okay. And your name, ma'am?
Valerie Ventura.
And what's your address?
Fifty-six Lennox Road.
So this is the direct of butter to that side of the house?
Correct.
Okay.
So looking at the house, you're on the left, Valerie?
Yes.
And, and you're the one who would be most directly affected by the, uh, by the dimensions, correct?
That is correct.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone here who is, would, um, like speak in opposition of the application? Okay. Thank you, everyone. We're going to go into our deliberations now, and this is a time when we speak amongst ourselves, and we'll let you know if we have any questions for anyone. Okay. So what does everybody think about the application, this request?
I think it's fairly simple. I mean, it's just, you know, um, it's just adding, adding onto a deck to make, um, I think the house more presentable and, um, you know, having a railing right in the middle of your picture window is not, um, probably not the best of situations. But we do have two variances or special permits. Lot coverage and left set, uh, side setback.
The, the setback we're talking about is the same as the house setback, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's an extension of the, of the existing non-conformity, in other words.
Yep, yep, exactly.
Okay.
That would be five point eight feet versus the ten foot requirement for the, um, left side setback.
Well, in view of the concurrence of the, uh, neighbor who is most directly affected by it, in the absence of any, uh, stated objection from anyone else, uh, I would move that we could find that the, uh, proposed, uh, change is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than, uh, the existing situation.
And I would second that, David Walsh.
Walsh, second to that. Any discussion on the motion? I'd like to raise something, and that is that, you know, we're, we're just perpetrating a, a, you know, a non-conformity. I know we want to, I always say that, but it is true. We're making it a little bit worse than it is. House is really tight over there. I went over there, and actually, I live not too far from there. I may have never even been on that road, which is kind of weird, but I've never even been on that road. I drove down that road, and I was like, wow, it is tight over here. Those houses are all crammed in. Um, but I can agree with you, Miss Ackerman, that, you know, I really, this picture window, the, the thing right there, it doesn't make any sense. You don't have any other deck. And it kind of makes sense to do it this way. So anyway, any further discussion on the motion of the finding? Okay, all in favor?
Peter Barber, aye.
David Walsh, aye.
Mike Raworth, aye.
Kelly, aye.
Jocelyn Campbell, aye. Okay, so we made the finding.
So Jocelyn, do we have to make two findings? One for each for lot coverage and setback?
I, I don't know. We, I believe we can do it in one, because we're looking at, it's a special permit. Um, you know, can we grant a special permit for a lot coverage relief? Um, with the, it's where the dimensional requirements of the building itself under Belatha. I think we could probably do it in both. Dave, what do you think? Dave Walsh?
I think, I think we could do it with just one motion.
Okay. All right, just wanted to make sure.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So I, I make, uh, the motion that we grant a special variance, um, uh, to extend the deck. Uh, and, and that, um, I, I would like to put a restriction on, um, as we normally do with decks, and then, and that is, uh, that this, uh, deck can never be enclosed.
I'll second the motion.
Great, any discussion on the motion? And, uh, did you say the word variance, Peter? Are you looking to?
I said special permit. I said special permit.
Said special variance.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Special, I, I, I make the motion that we grant a special permit, um, with the stipulation that the, uh, deck can never be enclosed.
Okay.
I will still second.
And it's been seconded by David Walsh?
And just, just for clarification, the, um, the stipulation of non-enclosing, uh, deck is something that we began doing, uh, several years back, because people would put a deck up and then enclose it, and then come back to us to put another deck up and then enclose it. And they basically grew their house that way. Um, so by putting the restriction, um, on, we call it the Eli Mavros rule. Eli Mavros was a longstanding, um, member of this board. Um, and he was actually the one that, that began doing this, so, uh, just for clarification.
You mean began building, uh, building additions to houses or enforcing the rule?
No, enforcing the rule. And we, that's why we, we kind of called it, uh, Dave, David, uh, was on the, the board, I think, early on when we started to, uh, call it the Eli Mavros rule, so.
Right.
That's a good rule. All right, so we've had some discussion on the motion. We, um, all in favor, say aye.
Peter Barber says aye.
David Walsh, aye.
Mike Raworth, aye.
Caitlin Kelly, aye.
Jocelyn Campbell, aye. All right, Miss Ackerman, so what's going to happen is we're going to drop off the minutes and the decisions, and we'll do our best, get everything filed within two weeks. Um, it'll be give or take a day on the decision, probably, but we'll get it done as soon as humanly possible. And then, once it's done, we get it filed, and there's a twenty day, um, appeal period if people want to appeal this decision. Okay?
Thank you. Understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before, before we move on to the next item, uh, let me just suggest in later what Peter's told us about the background of the Eli Mavros rule. Seems to me it makes sense to, uh, to put that in writing someplace, maybe in the regulations of the planning board at the next opportunity, just so that it doesn't get lost in the midst of time if there's a transition of members, so that it, and it also so that it, uh, gives adequate notice to applicants that, uh, this is likely to be a condition imposed upon any special permit, right?
Well, that actually is in our rules and regulations already, pretty much. It says that it must, the plan must be, the property must be built as presented, and then we are allowed to add any conditions that we want or that we feel are necessary.
Right, but this is, this appears to be a standing procedure, that, that a, an addition of a deck, a special permit that permits the addition of a deck, will be caused, will be conditioned on no enclosure of the deck. And since we're, appear to be doing that universally, seems to me to make sense to, uh, to let it be known to the public that this is what's going to be going on.
Oh, we can put a little more language in the, in the rules, if you like. We can talk about that at our next administrative meeting. Um, to, you know, maybe improve upon that, but it does say in the rules that, uh, you know, we can add any conditions that we want. And, um, it's not necessarily a standard procedure, because sometimes somebody can build a deck and make it to it later on, depending on.
Or we can just mention that it's a, it's a presumption, that there will be a condition added to any, uh, special permit, uh, that, uh, permits the addition of a deck with a non-conformity.
We, we might, yeah, but, but we may also want to, we may also want to, uh, approach this, the planning board about a zoning bylaw that essentially says that if you have a deck, you need to go in front of the zoning board of appeals under any condition to enclose it. And that way there, you know, uh, and then, and maybe even have a stipulation that says if it's a non-conforming deck, you're not allowed to enclose it ever. And that, you know, uh, we, we may want to, you know, that may be something for, to, for zoning change.
I mean, you guys, if you want to propose something, that's up to you, of course. But we can't always say always for every situation, because there may be a time where we have a non.
I know, but we, you can just state, you can just state it as a presumption, you know? Uh, there, it is, it is very likely that the Z B A will, will say X, Y, Z, and they, and when presented with this sort of situation, which is not hard and fast, but it, it, it at least gives notice to people. Anybody who may be contemplating, you know, the stepwise, uh, expansion of the building, like Peter suggested, that, uh, they're not going to get away with it, you know?
Right. Yep.
Well, it certainly has happened in the past, so we'll have to talk about that. Um, all right, so let's get on with the next meeting. Um, we have, the next one is one thirty-two Bass Point Road. And it is now, um, it's not quite five thirty, so we have to give it another nine minutes.
Oh.
Um, that people, the public, members of the public can, um, get on and be able to respond to any questions or what have you. Um, so we'll do that in nine minutes.
Okay.
Okay, so one of the things that, that we were talking about before was the, um, the possible changes of rules, and we've talked about it many times, that we really need to set up a committee. And maybe we should talk about that after this hearing tonight for a few minutes or at our next administrative hearing, um, regarding the bylaws. There are several things that, that I have in mind that we need to update or change. Might be a good plan.
Yeah, actually, um, the other thing, too, Jocelyn, is, is, um, I know we, we've had some, uh, training. Uh, we had training, uh, at the town hall for the committee. I was wondering if, you know, now that we're through COVID, would, would we have an opportunity to have another training session? And, and one of, and one of the training items I would like somebody to, to, I guess, come and talk to us about is the difference between a special permit and a variance, so that we have more clarification, and, and maybe that person could also give us some insight into what is the definition of substantially detrimental to the neighborhood?
Okay, we actually already had that training, but we'll have it again. I'm not sure you, but did you miss one, maybe?
Prob, uh, yeah, most, most likely. I mean, I was traveling quite a bit at the time. Yeah, right now.
Well, Caitlin and I have never, Caitlin and I have never had the training, so it's probably time.
Yeah.
We'll do it again, then. Well, I'll definitely reach out to them. And the good thing that, is that I want to bring up is, um, now that we have the, um, our, our account set up, so that the fees for the zoning board go into an account, um, and the applicants pay for their own advertising, it's no longer going to be negative on the town, and we're going to actually have our own balance of money we can use for the training. It's great. You know, and we'll do it via Zoom, too, you know? Which would be great. I'm excited about that. Does anybody still want the one on the, um, understanding and reading plans? So that was the next one we were going to do. If you don't feel it's necessary, we can just do the.
I would, I would like it, but it's, it's okay if we don't need it, but I sure would like to learn.
I, I certainly don't need it. I mean, I read plans all the time, so I, for me, it's not something I need. I, but, you know, feel free. I, I know that others, it's, it can be difficult. I've been reading plans for a hundred years. I know David probably doesn't need, uh, training on reading plans.
But it certainly makes sense to have the training, because if you have not, uh, looked at plans, you're, you're looking at a, you know, the Greek alphabet.
Right. Exactly.
So true. All right, I'll call and make arrangements for the training. Um, when do you want to have it? Does anybody have any date in mind?
July fourth.
Hey, we're not, we're not having fireworks, we might as well do something, right?
There you go, let's do training. But last time we were able to get together, and Caitlin and Michael missed it, but we had snacks and everything in the conference room.
Nice.
I mean, I'm sure that's coming pretty soon, isn't it? I mean, getting, getting back out of this Zoom or stuff.
Yeah, there's some legislation that's going to be filed or has been filed, and it's supposed to tell us by June fifteenth, right? If we can go.
Well, I wonder, is it, is it, uh, do we have the power to prescribe by rule that, uh, the rule that we could make, that we can hold these hearings by Zoom, whenever it turns out to be convenient?
Well, the problem we have there is the open meeting law.
Yeah, but I mean, that, that, right, that, that's, obviously, that is something that is important, but it may be considered to be complied with, since we've been doing it for a year.
Well, the, the, the governor, essentially, in his order, you know, says that he suspended the requirements of the open meeting law, but I believe that the legislation is going to, I'm hoping it will come down to the fact that they're going to, they're going to say, okay, this has been really effective for the communities and the towns and cities, and let's continue with it.
Oh, you, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. You say that there's legislation pending with that effect?
That's what I heard, yes. I spoke to the town clerk today, she told me that.
Oh, good.
I haven't seen it. There, there was a class I was supposed to attend about a month ago on this, and I couldn't attend.
It would be nice if there was an option. So we could do both, if somebody can't make it, you're traveling, you know, that's not an issue.
Right.
It just falls in place.
Yeah, I mean, even if they had it, if they, I know each of the basement rooms now, I was just up there meeting last week, um, has a large TV that's going to be connected, connected to, I believe, a computer. Um, I think it would be really cool, even if you guys were meeting in a room, where if you put it up on Zoom, then, you know, like, i- if somebody can't make it, then you could have that person. I know we did it by phone a couple of times, but it might be better if you're doing it by video, because, you know, you can see exhibits and things like that.
Well, that's true. And it's also the case that, that, uh, in many, many courts these days, they permit, uh, testimony of people from far away by video conference. And that, you know, that's as, that is taken to be as good as the person being in the room and under oath and testifying. So if that, if that can be made to work, then, uh, it ought, it ought to be applicable to this sort of thing that we're doing here.
Right.
I agree. Uh, Jocelyn, one quick question before we, uh, we get two minutes. Did we ever, I had sent you an email last week, where we could have go. Did we ever get a, an opinion from, in script regarding, uh, two thirty-eight, considerate?
Yes, we did.
We did. I don't, I don't, I didn't get to see it. Is it?
Okay. And I can ask to give it to us in writing, and I don't believe he sent an email. I think I just spoke to him on the phone.
Oh, okay.
Wait, let me check, though, while you, while we're, we've got two more minutes here. So let me check, see if he said anything, and, um.
I mean, it was, it was more about the, uh, the question of the, uh, the two-year hiatus.
Right.
Right, and what he said was, um, that the two-year hiatus is gone. They've lost all their rights.
Okay.
So we'll talk to, um.
All right, well, that's, that's pretty definitive. Yeah. And, and it's funny, I even went back and looked at a, any impacts that COVID might have had, but the house actually burnt down in January of, I believe, twenty eighteen, January or February.
Yeah, January first.
Right, so, yeah, so, I mean, had it happened in, say, May of eighteen, and we got into COVID, uh, oh, it was eighteen, yeah. Uh, but even, even still, that second year, uh, you know, maybe six months of the second year or whatever, so that, that was, um, you know, something I, I looked at.
All right, just wanted to.
So that, that, that opinion is going to be circulated before we have the, uh, the, uh, reconvene hearing on that property?
Yes, it is. It's like I just found it, so I'm going to flag it, and I'll circulate it to everybody as soon as the hearing's over.
Great. Thank you.
What I've been trying to do is stay focused on one hearing as much as possible, and then wait, let that hearing get through, because I found that when I send out materials to more than one hearing, people get mixed up. It is me.
Yes.
Okay, so we're almost, we're hour five thirty now. Okay, so we can get started. So here we are with, um, one thirty-two Bass Point Road. Today's June seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, we are recording this hearing. I never shut it off, so we kept going with the recordings, basically. And, um, my name is Jocelyn Campbell. I'm the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. And with us tonight is, um, David Walsh, Peter Barber, Caitlin Kelly, and Michael Raworth. And Michael Raworth and Caitlin Kelly are associate members, and I've appointed them to the, uh, full board for the hearing tonight. Um, the hearing process is such that I'm going to read the newspaper advertisement into the news, into the record, and then we're going to, um, give you an opportunity to present your case. Then we will ask questions from the board. We'll ask if there's anyone here to. Then we will ask questions from the board. We'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in favor or against. And um, then we'll deliberate and we'll have motions and make our decision. All right, so let's get this meeting started and I'm going to read the advertisement that was placed in the Lynn item. And here's the advertisement. At 5:30 PM tonight, we're going to hold a public hearing on petition filed by ATK LLC, owner of the property located at 132 Bass Road in Ahott, Massachusetts, seeking a special permit and a variance to remove old landing and stairs and build a new 6.8 foot uh, by 11-foot deck with stairs. The inspector of buildings has denied a building permit on March 22nd, 2021, with the proposed deck within violation of section 503 of the zoning bylaws of the town of Nahat, with the proposed lot coverage is 29%, with a maximum allowed at 25%. With the proposed left side is 4.1 feet, with a minimum allowed is 10 feet. And we're doing this meeting tonight via Zoom technology pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order, pending certain provisions of the open meeting law pursuant to general laws, chapter 38, section 18. So, let's get started and um, if the petitioner could present their case.
How you doing? Um, I'm Chris LeBlanc, um, I'm the contractor. Uh, I believe Ann is is on here also. Um, but I did want to clarify, so the, the um, I don't believe the uh, the the advertisement in the Lynn item was correct. It's a six-foot uh, so it's a 17-foot deck. Um, and it kind of tapers, um, and that would be like six foot seven uh, at the side closest to the driveway and 10 foot one at the side closest to the street.
So the applicant that I'm reading, Mr. LeBlanc, says right on it, I don't know if everybody can see it, but it says 6.8 by 11. Says remove old landing and stairs and build a new 6.8 by 11-foot deck with stairs leading towards the backyard and driveway.
Okay.
But okay, let's just go on, we'll see how we're thinking.
Yep, so um, so yeah, it would be a means of egress um, for for the deck. Uh, I don't know if you, if you went by uh, 132?
We always go by every property and we have been by.
Oh, yeah.
My members have as well.
Yeah, so how it's, it's pretty much falling off the house uh, right now and the stairs currently lead towards the uh, the street. So, so this new deck would be off of the, off of a sliding door that that's been installed. It would be a means of egress as well as it would, uh, the stairs would go back towards the back driveway. So when people come from the, you know, the driveway, they could, you know, access the stairs and walk up onto the deck. Um, and also just kind of give them a, a seating area for, you know, for having dinner out there, enjoying the nice uh, ocean view. Um, it would be built out of all composite decking, cable railings.
And Mr. LeBlanc, did you, you, you have anything more to say? Did you file some pictures today?
Excuse me?
Did you send some pictures in today?
I did.
Okay, um, I have those pictures and it's, you know, Mr., I told the building inspector secretary to let you know that we don't always accept things that are filed late. Um, so, but he did file some pictures today. Do the rest of the members want to see those pictures?
Uh, I got them up on my computer, so I, um, you know.
Same.
I did not see the pictures.
All right, I'm going to share my.
I didn't buy the house.
Um, hang on one second. All right, so. Okay. This is one of the pictures right here.
Yep, and that would, and these are the, this would be the picture just to show what kind of decking and uh, railing system that we would use.
Okay.
That shows the current stairs now.
Okay.
Uh, this is just a view from the street, just to, to show that, uh, you know, there's, there's a large parcel in between uh, with hedges and then abutting the neighbors. It's, you know, two cars fit in that driveway, so it's approximately uh, 20-plus feet from the, from the property line over to the existing house. Just another view, just to kind of give a idea of where. And that's the slider that was installed and that's the two-car driveway right there.
You, um, can I ask a question, Jocelyn?
Sure.
Or is it too early?
No, I, well, you know what, where are we at in this hearing anyway? We are in the middle of, he's sending his case, I want to hang on one second. Mr. LeBlanc, do you have anything else more you want to say tonight?
Uh, no, not at the moment.
Okay, great. Do any of the members have any questions of the applicant?
Uh, yes. So what, one of the, the, I think the third picture you mentioned, you said the the uh, it was 20 feet at the street? The, the driveway you were showing between the house and the hedges?
Oh, in between the hedges and the uh, the current abutter? Correct.
Yeah. Um, okay, this, all right, this picture. Um, you say, so it's 20 feet at the front. What is it, what is it at the back? That doesn't, it doesn't, those lines don't look parallel.
No, they're not. So, so I was, I was referencing from the hedges or the property line and then, then there's a two-car driveway that then separates the, the abutter's house.
Yeah, it was the neighbor's house he was, um, David, it was the neighbor's house, the 20 feet from the property line to the neighbor's, other neighbor's house. Not to this, not um, from the property line to this house.
Okay, so. One, one, 134 is the neighbor that's concerned, correct?
Okay, so it's 20 feet from 132 to the property line of 134?
No, sir. So it's, so the 20 feet that I was referencing was the, the property line of 132 and then the abutter's 134 property line starts there, but then there's a two-car driveway that then separates um, the, to the house. So it wouldn't be, so even though we're going to encroach on, you know, the setback, the there's still going to be a two-car driveway that separates to the house is what I was referencing in the picture.
But the two-car drive, the two-car driveway is owned by the abutter, correct?
Correct, right.
All right.
So, so Jocelyn, can you scroll to another picture that shows the, I'm just trying to clarify. Um, I, because I can see it, this one here. So David, what he's saying is the property line is for, is in the hedges and he's saying from the hedges to the yellow house is tw- about 20 feet. That's what, that's what, where the 20-foot reference. It has nothing to do with the hedges to the owner of the house that's requesting the deck.
Okay, that's, what is that dimension?
Um.
I'm trying to look at it some of it, I can.
So the dimension for the uh, for the setback? On the, on the deck itself to the property line?
He means from the side of the house to the head, to your property line.
From the side of the house to the, to the hedges at the front of the house. What is that dimension?
Life plan's terrible, whoever did it, don't tell us.
Well, the, yeah, um.
Well, it's, it's from the property line to the edge of the deck at the front side on the street side. It's 11 foot 6.
Okay, and what is it at the back?
Six foot three at the stairs.
At the.
Edge of the stairs to the edge of the property line.
At the stair, the proposed stairs.
Correct.
Okay, just trying to figure this out. All right.
Okay, so I want to stop sharing. Is anyone else all done with the pictures now? Or does anyone want to see anything else?
I'm good.
Okay, let me get this, make sure I've stopped sharing. Okay, pictures are gone, right?
Yep.
All right, so I have some questions for the applicant. Um, first of all, who's ATK LLC?
That's the owner, that's um, Ann Kavanaugh.
Okay, well, the owner actually is Ash Ventures LLC, according to the registry of deeds.
I believe it, I believe it changed over to ATK, um. But.
Was that a new deed? Ms. Kavanaugh, you're, you're, you're muted.
Muted.
Unmute yourself.
Oh, okay, sorry about that, guys. Um, no, I'm the owner. My brother was the former owner. He had a stroke uh, during COVID and I took over the property for him.
Okay, well, I, the deed is the registry of deeds, the master deed. You put this property into a condominium and um, the master deed says it's owned by Ash Ventures LLC.
Okay, I, I'll, I'll get that changed.
Okay, well, the property owner is Ash Ventures LLC. That's the declarant under the master deed for the property. It's going to get, make that clear. So the applicant isn't even the correct applicant, so that's an issue, but let's move on and discuss the the next step.
I've got the tax bill from the town in Ahott and it says ATK Equities, but.
Okay. I'm just, this is.
Aren't they, wouldn't they be able to cure that, Jocelyn, by uh, modifying the application to name both entities as applicants?
They could, and um, just bear in mind that the master, this condo, this house, this property was recently put into a condominium. I want to say it was in the last year or so, yeah, August 2020. And um, Ash Ventures LLC essentially conveys it in that sense to the master deed and submits it to the master deed. So they are the declarant under the master deed. All right, let's move on. They could easily remedy that if need be. Um, so a neighbor has opposed this particular, you know, application. We'll hear from them shortly. Um, is the property in a flood zone?
Is what?
Property in a flood zone. I'm asking Mr. LeBlanc.
Um, I believe, I believe so. I believe part of it is, yes.
Okay.
Doesn't that call for a submission from the Concom?
Before you go on to that question, Michael, can I finish asking my question? And so Mr. LeBlanc, you said that you believe it is in a flood zone? And have, how much of the house is finished? How much of the property's been, been renovated already?
So 130 is, uh, is 100% complete.
Second floor?
Uh, it is on the market currently.
Okay, and 132 is what you're working on now?
Correct. We're just about to get our rough inspections.
And do you have a certificate of occupancy for 130 already?
Yes.
All right, were you aware, Mr. LeBlanc, that this is a condominium?
Yes, yes. I, and I wasn't, I wasn't involved in 130 um, building. I came in uh, to, to renovate 132. So, um, but I did try to clear up whatever uh, whatever was uh, not completed.
Okay, and I saw that there's a, there's a deck on the roof for 130, correct?
Correct.
For both of them, right?
Yeah, for both, right? Okay. How high is, how tall is that property, you know?
Uh, I, I don't know. I, I don't have that information.
All right, those are my questions. Anyone else have a question?
Yeah, I've got a couple more. Um, so what is the present uh, access into 132?
So there's a, there's an entrance in the rear, uh, on the driveway side off a spinny path.
Okay, off of.
And that, so if you, uh, if you turn down to spinny path, uh, and then you enter the parking lot on the right-hand side. Um, and then you enter through and, and per the plans, like that were submitted to the town, they call it the, the basement first, the second, uh, and then it's first floor basement, second floor and uh, oh, excuse me, yeah, first floor, second floor, or third floor.
So then?
So you enter into the, into what they call the first floor.
And that?
According to the plan.
Now, isn't that a, uh, access to deck that we approved about six months ago for this building?
I'm not aware of that.
All right, okay, I thought, I thought you were involved in the, in that application.
And I, I guess I misunderstood the question. Which, which deck are we?
Because I, I mean, this is the third time this building's been in front of us.
Okay.
In the last year. And I thought we approved a deck on the back of that building.
Nope, there's no decks on the back of the building.
Well, the, the access, the, because I remember adjusting the size of the the size of the deck that we were used there for access.
David, I think you're thinking about the property next door.
Yeah, there's, there's no, there's no deck on the back side.
I know exactly what you mean. I remember going there and taking, and when I went to take my, my walk around, I saw it and I said, we just did that property next door.
So I'm, I'm actually off by, all right, I'll uh, apologize if I'm off by a, a building.
Or two. Yeah, I think that one had, that one, I think, had a wall that ran along that side of the building and that, um, we were concerned about firefighter access.
Right, okay, yeah.
And that was one, that was 156 Bass Point and I believe that was, uh, yes, that was a year ago, actually.
Yeah.
Okay, the other, the other question I have is the the construction that's going on right now, it looks like there's a a couple of windows and a sliding glass door that's already been installed on this building.
Mm-hmm.
Where this is going?
Correct.
How is that, is that installed on the premise that we give you the deck and uh, stairs that you need?
Well, it's going to need.
Wondered if the cart's before the horse here.
Well, in, in hope that, yes, it would, it would get approved. We do have the, we do meet the setback. The only setback that we're, is, is on the stairs.
But how, how do you think, feel you need, meet the setback, Mr. LeBlanc?
Right, isn't it 10 feet on the side?
Mm-hmm. To the, to the building. And now you have to add the stairs in, the stairs count.
The, the actual deck is 11 foot 6 to the property line on the fr- on the, on the corner. It's the stairs that, and I would, I would hug the stairs close to the, to the building. Um, but there's an electrical meter right there. Or I would have, I would have just put the stairs, you know, directly on the side of the building. But the main.
Why can't you replace what you currently have? The stairs.
Um, I mean, it would, it would be great if they could have a, a, a small deck to go out and and maybe eat dinner out on the deck. I mean, the other deck is going to be on the, on the, off of the master bedroom and and taking, I, I guess, like cooking in the, in the kitchen and then bringing all the food up to the third floor and I mean, I guess it would kind of be a hard to do.
It just seems that, there's a, you know, when you turn a building into condos, you know, there's there needs to be a lot of forethought of how all this is going to fit. And I think we're, we're throwing in a, a sliding glass door and windows and then saying, well, we've done that, we really need a deck there and make it all worthwhile. And it's coming back. It's starting originally and say, we want to put a deck here and we're going to put a slide glass door here. The other stairs are going to go the opposite direction and closer to the property. Just, it's something, just, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to process.
Okay, well, let's talk about that when we deliberate. Do, do they have any more questions for the petitioner?
What about if I turn the stairs and brought them towards the front of the house like the old stairs were? And they could be.
We're in the middle of this. I have to ask if any of the members have any other questions. Caitlin, Peter, David, anybody more, any questions? Michael?
I'm good.
Nothing further.
All right. So Mr. LeBlanc, you wanted to add something to that?
I mean, if, 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 if that would, if, you know, meeting the setback in the side and just changing the stairs and bringing them down the front would, would accommodate. Um, and it would actually be further away from the, from the neighbor's property. Um, if that would be. If that would be acceptable.
Isn't that the way the stairs currently are? Don't they lead out to the street?
They do, I mean, I guess, you know, from a, from a standpoint of, you know, nowadays, I guess, you know, anybody could, you know, I guess they were trying to run them off of the back. It would be one, closer to the parking lot and two, somebody couldn't just walk down the sidewalk and, you know, walk up this, the side of the stairs, you know, that lead to the street and, you know, be right at the, at the door. I guess it would just give, um, you know, the homeowners a little more privacy.
Oh.
A little more safety, right, where they would have to walk through the backyard to walk up on the door.
Are, are you suggesting that if you put the stairs in the same spot, there would not be a deck?
No, I'm ask, I'm asking if I, if I leave the deck where it is and then just turn the stairs and bring them down towards the front of the street. If that would be. That would be.
I think you're even worse off.
Right.
Well, let me, let's just may, let, let me make sure we understand ourselves. Today, there's a, there's a small landing that leads to the steps that, that, uh, face the street. And the deck which you're talking about is the proposed deck. There's no existing deck, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna take a look at that one more time.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm looking at the picture. I mean, uh, if, if you literally slid the, the landing, and I know you probably wouldn't use the same, you know, landing and railings and stuff, but if you slid it back to the sliding glass door, you would have the stairs that would run down in a, a, pretty close to the same spot. I, I think that would be better than, you know, a, a full-sized deck and the stairs.
And what is, what is the dimensions of the stairs? If you were to bring them back the same way they are now?
Excuse me?
What is the dimension, the width of the stairwell that's?
Three feet, it's a three by three landing right now. It's basically, it's, it's just a landing with a set of stairs. More like a, uh, in case of emergency to, to get out of the house.
Right.
Okay. All right, that's, I'm good for the time being.
All right, so is there anyone present tonight who would like to speak in favor of the application?
No, I, I, this is Ann Kavanaugh. So I just wanted to say that the whole, uh, point of the deck and the.
I'll put you down as the owner?
Yes.
And what's your address?
Uh, 565 Broadway, number nine, New York, New York, 10012.
Okay.
Yeah, so the point was to try to make the property more beautiful. And, um, when I first saw the staircase and actually went up the staircase, uh, it wasn't that stable. So, uh, you know, we wanted to put in something that looked good, uh, to make the property and the neighborhood look better.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone else have to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition of the application?
Yes.
Okay. And your name?
Debbie O'Connor. Or Debbie Daffy O'Connor.
Debbie O'Connor, what's your address?
62 Spinney Path.
Okay. Did you want to say any particular Debbie or just that you're opposing?
What did she say?
Nothing to do with you. All right, just go.
Can I, should I speak now?
Yeah.
If you'd like to speak, sure, go ahead.
Oh, okay, sorry, it's hard to hear. Okay, so we're the property that is behind the house on Spinney Path. And the way our house is situated, the, in the way that their house is situated, the deck with the stairs to the back of the house would direct, directly obstruct our ocean views from our main living room on the first floor. That's the first point. And then the second point of note is we do not currently see the existing staircase to the front of the house.
Okay.
And those are our two points.
Okay.
And I believe, uh, Paula and, um, Brock Bennett have sent them a letter.
They have. I'm going to review that letter in a minute with everyone. I just want to find out if anyone's present first who would like to speak. Okay, is there anyone else in opposition that would like to speak this evening?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. and Mrs. Paula Bennett? Or, or Mr. Bennett?
Yeah, this is Mr. Bennett.
Hi.
How you doing?
We did receive a letter from you and I haven't, was going to read that next. But, um, since you're on the phone, why don't you tell everybody what your letter said, your opposition letter?
Well, first of all, the setback.
For the record, could you state your address, please?
134 Bass Point Road.
Okay.
I'm the direct abutter. And first of all, the setback with, where he is presuming to put his deck will not be 10 feet off my property line. It, it'd be more like six to four feet. Out front on the street side, it's just about 10 feet, but it runs on an angle. When you look at the pictures of the bushes, when you get to the end of where the bushes are, those bushes are on my land. That runs on an angle. It goes right halfway through the bushes in the middle, then to the end of it on the other side. Plus, I'm opposed to having a deck hanging over my driveway like that. There's a fire safety issue. You, you got the deck there, you got the bushes there. If there was ever a fire, the fire department would be able to get in there to work. The noise issue, drilling, they have two beautiful decks upstairs, one on the ocean side, one on the side of the house. There's no reason why they need a big deck down there like that. What, my feeling is they're trying to enhance the property to, to bring up the dollar value, to make more money on it at the neighbor's expense. And, and I've been putting up with this construction over here for over three years and it's just getting, I'm getting fed up with it. If I go to sell my home and there's a big deck out there, you know, it could be a potential, uh, potential decrease in property value for me. So I'm dead against it.
Okay. And I want to point out that, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Bennett, Paula Bennett as well, sent in an opposition letter. Um, and the letter essentially says what Mr. Bennett just said, except that it also said that, um, I'm just gonna summarize it a little bit because I, I'll read, I guess I'll read it real quickly because you missed the issues. One of them that you mentioned was that you felt that you were posing because it was going to affect your quiet enjoyment of your property, privacy issues, fire safety issues, noise issues, potential decrease in property value, offensive odor from grilling or smoke and financial and emotional harm. So that's the letter we got and attached to it are some pictures of the deck. And that'll be on record. So I'm assuming it's, Mr. Bennett, would you, do you have any more to say or you're off that?
Well, I'm all set for right now.
Okay. So, um, anyone else like to speak in opposition of this matter? All right. Now that everybody has spoken favor and opposition, we're going to deliberate amongst ourselves. And that's when we talk to each other and if we have any questions, we'll let you know. Okay, so what's your opinion?
I think the, uh, objections that have been raised are pretty significant.
I agree. Uh, I believe that, um, you know, when we start talking about blocking ocean views and, and, um, you know, I, this, I didn't say anything about, uh, airways or sun, but, uh, blocking ocean views is a pretty substantial, um, you know, effect on the neighborhood.
And also the, uh, the addition of the deck implies that there's gonna be, you know, barbecuing or something going on there, which is, uh, something that is, uh, is gonna have, uh, an effect on the budding neighbor, which was not, if you will, not, not part of the original construction. And essentially, the, the owner has bought the place as it is and obviously want to enhance its value, but, uh, the, the zoning bylaw is meant to be a limit on how much you can do, uh, when, uh, the sharp elbow is impinged on the neighborhood. Uh, so they, they had no reason to expect that they were gonna be able to enlarge as they proposed here.
Well, I, I think I have to agree with everyone else that, um, you know, I feel the same way. You know, I'm always up, making an argument for light and air. There are times when a view is blocked and it's minimal. We had a hearing recently where it seemed like the view was blocked a little bit on the sides, but it was down and we, we went with it. But in this case, I can kind of see that. And when I was behind the property, um, I could kind of see what they were talking about with the view. And also the fact that they can't see the stairs where they are now because of the angle. That's one, one issue. Another is the fact it's going into the setback. Fire safety issues, noise. Anyone else want to add to that? Caitlin?
Yeah, I, I think the, the proposed setback of, of four feet, when the minimum allowed is 10, it's one thing if you're talking about a fence, but when you're talking about a deck that people are actually gonna be sitting on, eating whatever, and they're four feet away from the next person's property, I, I don't see how we could allow that.
I think that there's a valid argument to be made that it could potentially impact property values of the neighbors as well.
So what are we doing?
So I would move for, I would move for a finding that, uh, that the proposed, uh, modification does have a substantially detrimental effect on the neighborhood.
I second that motion.
Any discussion on the motion?
Uh, just, yeah, kind of a procedural thing. Do we, if we make a finding, oh, no, never mind, I'll, I'll bring it up after.
And, and no further discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Peter Barber, aye.
David Walsh, aye.
Mike Raworth, aye.
Who seconded that motion?
I did.
David Walsh.
David Walsh.
So it's Michael Raworth and David Walsh, okay. And so David, you just said aye. Who else seconded, who is, um?
Peter said aye.
Peter said aye.
Mike Raworth said aye.
Justin Campbell, aye.
Caitlin Kelly, aye.
Okay, just making findings, finding that we feel that this deck, Mr. LeBlanc, is going to be more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. And so therefore, you know, what we would suggest to you at this point, a couple of things. One of them is, and I don't know if the other members feel the same, what if, if Mr. LeBlanc were interested in doing what you suggested, David? I think it was you or Peter, I'm not sure, who suggested just sliding the current, you know, current stairway back a little bit so it was lined up with that door opening and leave it like that? That would be minimal. Or you want us to say exactly where it is with everybody's point on, if you want that?
Well, I, I, I mean, I, I think, I think what, my recommendation from the board is, one, is to have them withdraw without prejudice and reproduce, yeah, and reproduce plans that show essentially, you know, a landing out of the sliding glass door and a set of stairs, which is the minimal that you need. Um, it's, it, it isn't gonna substantially change from what's there now. And I, I still believe they, they're gonna need a, a special permit or a variance because they're not gonna have the 25-foot setback on the front. And they may not even make the side setback, but at least allowing them to have something similar to what they have, which is a second means of egress.
The only problem with that, David, I mean, Peter, is that then we, well, I just want to make sure that everybody's clear. If you make a recommendation like that, that does not necessarily, from the board, and does not necessarily mean that we would allow it. So we need to make that really clear that that's just an idea that you have, or I don't know if it's a recommendation or an idea. But essentially, if we go forward with the rest of our motion and the applicant does not withdraw, then we will be denying it, their, their application tonight, and they will not be able to reapply for two years. So, um, it might behoove them to withdraw their application or give them that opportunity to do that. But if you make a recommendation or a suggestion and then they decide to go ahead and do that and spend money on new plans and this and that and come back, we may still not allow it, depending on what the circumstances are and if the new, um, plan actually obstructs the view and continues, you know.
You're right, you're right.
Just wanted to make that clear because I kind of felt stuck sometimes.
I would recommend we don't make any suggestion and merely ask them if they want to withdraw without prejudice.
Right, I think that's a better choice.
Yeah.
So Mr. LeBlanc and Ms. Kavanaugh, here, here you have it. Would you like to withdraw without prejudice so you can come back? Or would you like us to make a decision for you tonight?
Okay, so when, if we withdraw without prejudice, then we can come back and present. The staircase is not safe, so it has to be replaced. So we'll come back and move, uh, with that proposal.
Well, I don't know that you'd need a, a building permit to replace an existing staircase.
Right, but, but that staircase doesn't line up with their door, their new sliding glass door.
You'll fucking do a bad man.
Sorry?
So you need to take out the door and replace the current, you know, talk with Wayne, the building inspector, about that. What you need to do. Um, but your choices right now really are to withdraw, uh, your application or to let us make a decision on this matter.
So we'll, we'll withdraw and we'll come back.
Okay.
Let me just flag one thing to, so that there's no confusion about it. Um, the sliding glass door was apparently constructed without consultation with anybody on the assumption that this, uh, this, uh, special permit was gonna be approved. And just the fact that having constructed the sliding glass door, wherever it is, does not, uh, entitle the applicant to any particular rights to, uh, to a relief from this board. I mean, what you've got is a, is a means of egress through a staircase that's pre-existing. And presumably, although I'm not sure, I think you could probably repair that without a building permit. But changing the location of it is a change which, which presumably is gonna require action by the building inspector and possibly a second return to this body. But just so you're aware that having built that sliding glass door, you all were at risk about that and you don't gain any, any leverage by virtue of having done that on your own.
I, I think they realize that.
Okay.
Understood.
All right, good point, Michael. All right, anyone else wanna, they're gonna withdraw their application, so let's not be a dead horse.
Also, do we, do we have to make a motion to accept the withdrawal or is it?
That was my next thing.
All right, I'm sorry.
Motion for that purpose.
I'll make a motion that we accept the, uh, withdrawal of the petition without prejudice.
Uh, Pete Barber, uh, seconds it.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
I, David.
Barber, aye.
Caitlin Kelly, aye.
Welcome, Pete Barber, Caitlin Kelly.
Mike Raworth, aye.
Justin Campbell, aye. Yeah, good luck, that, and, I mean, Mr. LeBlanc, Ms. Kavanaugh, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
And, uh,
I'll second that.
Who's seconding that motion?
Pete, Pete Barber. Yeah.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
David Walsh, aye.
Peter Barber, aye.
Caitlin Kelly, aye.
Mike Raworth, aye.
Justin Campbell, aye. Thanks, everyone.
Take care.
Thank you.